I'm calling to order the May 22 meeting of the Auburn Select Board. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consisting with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 408-650-3123 with access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone else also recording? Thank you. Please rise if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will note we do have a person remote at this meeting, so any votes will be taken by roll call vote. So just to confirm, everybody can hear. When I call your name, please respond. Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Ms. Kavanaugh? Here. Mr. Corain?
Here.
Great. So we do have some public comments. So, Mr. Rafferty, if you would like to start?
Can I make my comments from here?
Come to the table, come up to the center.
Sure. That's perfect. Oh, thanks.
Good evening. It's nice to have everyone here. Such a strange night, dark and stormy night. We had a power outage, but everybody has made it. I just want to make some brief comments on the vote that's going to be happening on the new Town Manager. I wanted to comment on the process. First of all, I'd like to say that there was public comments that were available at that meeting, and my fear is that the public comments favored the local candidate, which would be the current Town Manager. Obviously, the people who came from out of town, it would be hard for citizens to travel all that way to make the public comments. And so unfortunately, I think it favored them, and perhaps that maybe that shouldn't have been permitted. And in fact, the comments were being made by people who were appointed board members. So there was at least a slight conflict of interest that was in existence. In addition, at the beginning of the public comments, the Chair made the comment that she would prefer that no negative comments were made, only positive comments. I don't think that that was a fair thing to do. According to recent court decisions, people can say whatever they want in public comments, whatever they want. And they're not to be forbidden. And to say something like that, I think, may have suppressed some critical comments that may have come from the public. Finally, I would just like to recommend to the Board that perhaps you should consider taking a secret vote tonight. The reason being, if anyone votes against the candidate that wins, you then have to work with that candidate for years to come. So perhaps it should be an anonymous vote. It's just a recommendation on my part that you should consider. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Richards?
That's good.
Yeah.
That's good. Good evening. Thank you. I'm hoping that I can add some positive things to the discussion. I came to comment about the Town Manager. I drew up some questions that I would like you to consider as you think about your vote, that I would consider if I was making a choice in your stead. So as you consider in debate resumes, what specific townwide outcomes will define a successful hire tonight or any other night for the next 36 months from now? Is it a continued bond rating? Is it preserved net free cash ratios greater than 8%? Is it a police fire or other municipal labor contract settled under CPI? Which of those outcomes are unachieved by extending the search three more months? Auburn's fiscal year '26 budget already prests $86 million. What incremental ROI does the Board expect a new manager to unlock in dollar or risk terms? Above what interim Town Manager Vecchio's current trajectory is providing? Which three KPIs will be embedded in the next employment contract for their first-year bonus grid? And what public dashboard will residents be able to use to track them quarterly? And is that something you would consider? About the consultant, it's interesting that Community Paradigm was chosen. Community Paradigm has placed more than 40 managers to their credit since 2016. How many of these hires met or exceeded other boards? Written objectives after year three? Were you given the opportunity to reach out and talk to those other boards and maybe consider how they felt their investment and their consultant worked out? And where do the firm's replacement guarantees kick in if there's any issue with an Auburn hire that they recommend? What weighted rubric did the screening committee apply to narrow the pool? And will you release the anonymized score sheets to the public after the process is done? Did Paradigm provide a true talent mapping of the 20 regional sitting managers making $200,000 to $250,000, or only the self-selected applicant cohort? If not, why? Given that Danvers, Great Barrington, and North Attleboro hired the same consultants last year, how do we avoid the issue of candidate recycling between multiple municipalities with disparate needs? How has their picks or suggestions skewed Auburn's specific needs and challenges and your vision moving forward? Or are we in an echo chamber of references? What fiduciary harm accrues to taxpayers if the Board defers the vote 60 days to re-advertise, especially while we have a known steady hand at the helm that's not going to make a mistake or cause major tumult in the form of Town Manager Vecchio or interim Town Manager Vecchio? Is any statutory or grant deadline compelling your urgency for a May hire? Or is the pressure purely consultant or outside trip? Have you quantified the optionality value of waiting until the July ICMA conference and when their pipeline opens? I did a quick check. I didn't know much about this. Apparently, July is a big time when there's a huge turnover of talent, towns meet town managers. So it seems a little odd that we're rushing in May. Generally, I won't comment individually on the candidates. I think they're well-known in Stroud, and you know, folks have done their own research or whatnot. I just have a question. One of the candidates has made in the last four or five years approximately $1 million in having contracts and severance package packages bought out. How will you protect and covenant against that here? That's my only comment on those votes. Will the employment contract tie any cost of living or merit step to outperforming the municipal cost index rather than CPI? Does the Board commit to a clawback of year-one bonuses if a qualified audit opinion or DOR finding occurs within the next 24 months after they're hired? Will you cap unused vacation cash outs at 50% to avoid the $350,000 exit package that plagues peers from accumulated vacation time? Will you institute an annual Town Manager signed, gap-aligned, and published-on-the-town-website newsletter detailing their strategy, risk, and capital allocations for the town? Do you accept the standing rule that any mid-contract renegotiation triggers a public hearing and independent compensation study? And then finally, what is the Board's contingency plan if none of the finalists clears the performance hurdles we've discussed or I propose tonight or any that you've developed on your own? Have you costed the option of engaging the Mass Municipal Association or ICMA for an interim-to-permanent pipeline of candidates in the future? That's it. I wish you luck in your vote or whatever decision you make. I hope I provided some help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Ms. Chakorsky.
Would you be kind enough to allow me to sit?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. First of all, I want to compliment the Board on the transparency.
Mary, before you start, can we just confirm that you can hear? The mics can hear Mary?
Maybe sitting at the table would be a little better because it'd be closer. I was waiting for Chris.
Chris left. Okay, just go for it.
Is it okay? Can you hear me okay? Okay. First of all, thank you for the transparency of the process. I think you had three excellent candidates. I was one of the few people in the last round of the Town Manager, you know, appointment that objected. I didn't object at all to Ed because I have nothing but respect for you, Ed. But I felt that there should be transparency and that there should be voice, all of the things that you've allowed as part of this Board, so I compliment you on that. While I respect Mr. Rafferty, I have a very different opinion. I had the discomfort of being the Chair of the Board of Trustees for the last six years, but of the six years that I was on the Board, it was a very difficult process. We lost seven members of our Board because meetings became contentious. The meetings were not contentious because board members were contentious. They were contentious because the person who was creating the contention was somebody that was not evaluated for years. There were not rules that were set forth, and as a result, the behavior became very ugly. I personally was subjected to a lot of anonymous letters that were written about me, being accused of being somebody who's hostile or a bully. I had, you know, this process of... I can't, I can only describe it as hostile, but it was, every accusation was unsubstantiated. I've never bullied anyone in my life. And just because I'm a definitive, decisive woman who's a leader, it doesn't make me a bully. It just makes me intelligent. Dory Vecchio, I support 100% because she has, as I said in my first comments last week, she has an impeccable understanding of human resources, human resource management, the ability to communicate to diverse people in a community, from workers to people who are complaining, to people like me that was just, I was getting burnt out. I was yelled at. I was called names. My name was feared, and letters were written about me that were not true. They weren't even from real people. So having had that experience, I was cynical when Ed took over. And I didn't know Dory at all, but right away, I found that she was competent. She was credible. She was well-spoken. She, as Matt said in his comments, she listens very well, carefully, not just to the words, but beyond the words, what we're really trying to convey. In a very, very clear and methodical way, we were able to talk to her about our need set and the fact that we needed our voice back as a Board. We needed the ability to be able to suggest goals for the Library Director. Dory and Ed worked very well with us in order to just hear us, to be able to create some sort of a medium ground. And in the end, the Library Director left. She was not fired. She left. And there was some comments, I could hear it when I spoke the last time, about what? She didn't resign? Yes, she did. But I have to say, because Dory Vecchio has the intelligence, the sensitivity, the leadership capacity, she was able to be very, very respectful to everybody involved and bring us to a place where we're all able, as my team says, it's like a new day. We all have a voice again. We all feel that the time that we're spending is valuable. One of my dearest, somebody I look up to so much, as I do Matt as well, is Nan Johnson. She left us because we weren't getting anywhere. We were spinning our tires in mud. But when she saw the growth and the optimism and the fact that we had a voice, she came back to our Board. So I'm very excited to be a very, a very high-functioning Board once again. We have a lovely Library Director. Nan Johnson was able to be on the Hiring Committee and to be empowered to do that. And all of those things came to pass because Dory Vecchio has the leadership skills that she has. And I don't doubt that other people have leadership skills as well. But I've been a leader for a very long time, and I've met very few people like Dory Vecchio. She is the best. And I say that from somebody who hasn't seen a lot of that in my life. So I thank you for allowing me to comment, but I just throw all of my support behind Dory Vecchio. And I would drive all the way across the state to say this in the rain if that's where she was applying. So I thank you for giving me time to speak.
Thank you for that. Is there anybody else that would like to make, certainly, additional public comments?
Yeah, come on.
Did you just want to come up? I want to make sure you're heard.
Let me get this straight, Madam Chair. This is people who come in who didn't sign up for public comment at this point?
Um, yeah, I...
The way I looked at it, there was only two of us that signed up for public comment. And yet someone now is being allowed to speak.
Oh, no, she was on the list. She's on the list.
Well, she did sign up.
But I'm happy to take other public comments if there are additional public comments.
This proves the point that I made, that once again, a public-appointed official, elected official, is appointed, elected, someone who's in the system is endorsing the local candidate, and the people who were from outside the committee, outside the town, haven't had a chance to say anything. And since we're now discussing particular candidates, let me say something about Dory.
Sure.
Dory does seem to be a nice person. She seems to be one of the nicest people that you can deal with compared to some Town Managers that we have, public presence excluded. But I will say this. At the beginning of this process, I asked Ms. Vecchio for a copy of her resume in the interest of openness. She sent it to Town Council to get his opinion. Town Council, and you had to pay Town Council for this opinion. Town Council came back, sent me a letter and said, "Here are all the reasons why she doesn't have to give you the resume, okay? But she wants to give it to you, so here it is." So then it begs the question, why did you send it to Town Council and pay him to render opinion that was essentially not needed? And then, come to find out, probably because of the recommendation of Selectman Corain, the resumes were posted online, so the openness was there. So perhaps you should inform Town Council that giving out resumes is in the public interest. But it just goes to show you, I now question the decision-making process of the Town Manager. Why did it go to Town Council? Why did you pay Town Council for a simple request for a resume that should be open, and apparently it is now? Why didn't that happen? So now I have to question her decision-making ability.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that perhaps did not sign up for comment that would like to make a comment now? Certainly.
I would just like to reinforce the kinds of things that Mary said because I've been on the Board for over 15 years. And the last two years have probably been the very best years that I've ever experienced on that Board because of the support that we had from Ed as well as Dory. And that process, that had made our lives much better and able to contribute much more to the town itself, to be able to help in the direction of the Library. So that's all I can add to what Mary already said. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I also would like to point out that we accepted comments by mail, by phone calls, by several forums, and we truly appreciate all of the public comments that we've received. Certainly.
I'll be brief because I'm sure you guys already have a good idea of where you're going.
I'm so sorry. Can I just get your name?
Oh, Kathy Stone.
Okay. Thank you.
But, you know, not only being a Town Meeting Member and dealing with town politics and so forth for several years now, I lead a volunteer organization that is very active in public safety in town, the SIR program. And as a relatively new leader in that category and struggling with some of the details and semantics around dealing with grants and so forth, I have to say that Dory has been exceptionally helpful in getting me over some hard rocks within the past week so that we do not lose a substantial grant that we haven't utilized yet. So I have to give her kudos for that.
Thank you so much for your comments. I'm going to make one last call. If there is anybody that has joined us on the Zoom or in the room that would like to make a public comment, if you just would like to raise your hand if you're in the Zoom or... I am not seeing any. Thank you, everybody, so much for your comments. We do have one quick matter that we just need to take care of. We had made a previous, in a previous meeting, we had made a vote on an open-air license. Oh, somebody just unmuted. Would they be interested in making a comment?
I don't think they unmuted. I think they joined.
Oh.
It says waiting for name, so.
Okay. We have a request. We had previously approved an open-air license for the Boy Scouts of America Troop 101 for their yard sale. It looks as if there will be inclement weather on the Sunday, and they have asked Saturday.
On Saturday. Yep, inclement weather on Saturday.
And they have asked if it would be possible for them to hold their event on Sunday instead. In our packet, we did receive... It has the email thread requesting that. The Library seems to be fine with it. Do board members have any questions?
No, no questions. I would just, Madam Chair, I would just make a recommendation that we approve them holding it Saturday, May 24, or Sunday, May 25, so that if the weather is good and they want to move forward with the Saturday, they're allowed to.
Certainly. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the open-air license granted to Boy Scouts of America Troop 101. And the license would be effective on either Saturday, May 24, or Sunday, May 25.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is a roll call vote. I will start with you, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Corain?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The Chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much for letting us sneak that into this Thursday meeting. So we are now moving on to Select Board discussion.
Madam Chair, before we go on to the next agenda item, can I just ask for your indulgence as well as the indulgence of the people here and online that propose we hold a moment of silence? So nine years ago today, Auburn lost Officer Ron Tarantino Jr., a member of the Auburn Police Department who was killed in a line of duty. And I just learned this today. On the same day, we lost retired Fire Chief Roger Bellhumor, I apologize if I'm butchering his name, who lost his battle with occupational cancer from his time in service to the Auburn Fire Department on the exact same day. So I was just hoping that we could take a moment of silence in recognition of those two public servants who gave their life in service to the town.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, absolutely. We're going to hold a moment of silence. Thank you so much for letting us thank them for their service. We are now moving along to Select Board discussion on candidates, and I am going to open this to my fellow Board members. Are there any questions about candidates or comments?
So I'd like to kind of make a comment. I know it's been raised that the local or interim Town Manager has had people speak on her behalf. I know in our packets, we did get comments from the people associated with the others. So I feel like there was an opportunity for feedback on the other candidates. So I don't want, and it was part of our packet, so if someone looked online, they should be able to see that as well. And one of the reasons I wasn't ready to make that decision last week was time to let it sink in and not let the last comment make the biggest impact. So having time to review, I think we are able to weigh the comments and pull out any last-minute bias or anything like that. And we've had, as the Chair has mentioned, an opportunity for feedback from the residents as well as staff, and this time has allowed us that. So I appreciate the Board allowing that time and allowing the feedback to come in because I don't think I've been contacted about one topic as often or as much as I have in this past week about stuff. So I appreciate the feedback from everybody. Some people are going to be upset with whatever happens tonight because the feedback I got was across the board. There was one candidate that didn't get as much feedback, but two candidates were, you know, at top of mind for many residents, several of the staff, myself. I went through my rubric as well. So it is a tough decision, but the time has allowed me the opportunity to reach out and get as much information on all the candidates. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to? In my mind, I think I had two candidates that I thought performed better in the interviews. And I liked them both for different reasons, to be honest. But if anybody else is...
I have a lot to say, so I'm going to be long-winded. So if Ann or Dan want to go first, I'll defer to either one of you.
You can go first.
I'm happy to wait, Mr. Corain. You can go. I'm listening.
Okay. So, and I just have a list to kind of jog my memory on what I want to say. The first thing, before I jump into the actual candidates, is the contract. You know, in my mind, this is the... Although Dory is quote-unquote "an internal candidate", she's only been here about a year and a half. She certainly, you know, her values, her judgment, her experience comes from other municipalities. So in my mind, this will probably be the first time since 2009 that we have a truly new administration leading the town. And, you know, given that we will have this new administration, this new goal, regardless of which three candidates are chosen, I think it's very important that we get the contract right. And I'm going to throw it out there right now. I know only two of us can negotiate the contract due to Open Meeting Law violations. I'm going to put this out here right now. I'd like to be one of those two. I have 20 years of experience in municipal government. 17 of those are leading departments. I have been involved in the executive search for two regional, state organizations that I sat on the Executive Board at the time. And, you know, in my mind, that contract needs to really shape how the new Town Manager interacts with the Board. It clearly defines goals, clearly defines goal-setting, clearly defines, you know, what the Board expects from them on a yearly basis over the next three years. And I just want to make sure that we get that contract right because that's really going to set the tone for how we work with that person for the next three years. And, you know, I think I made it pretty clear in comments I made publicly in the Board or privately to people that, you know, the Charter did give the Town Manager a lot of control, but it still provided a lot of control to the Board of Selectmen that I think has deteriorated since the Charter was passed due to its operating procedures that were put in place. And I think it's time for this Board to really clawback some of the power we once had and we rightfully had by the Charter and to ensure that, I think, the contract has to clearly state the expectations of the Board that we have for this new person. Next, similar to what Steve said, I want to thank everybody who has submitted feedback. I'm glad we waited the week, to be quite honest with you. We, I think it provided an opportunity for employees of the town, for residents of the town, for business owners within the town to reach out to all of us via phone calls, text messages, emails. I mean, we got it all. You know, anonymous letters mailed to us, you know, that provided, I think, insightful feedback to the Board. And I want to make it clear that although my opinion may disagree with some of those that were provided, I want to make it clear that I took all of that feedback to heart. I read it all. I pondered it all. I considered it all. And I was really happy to see the feedback come back because when I was one of the ones pushing for an open process that all five of us agreed needed to happen, that was one of the goals, was to make sure that we provided the opportunity in this go-around, that since it will be a new... it will be a new town administration for the participation by residents, by elected officials, appointed officials, business owners, et cetera, to provide that feedback and take part in that process. So I was happy to see that. I do want to explain to, for those who care, the residents, the process that I went through. So we've all heard me say I go down rabbit holes. And from the minute I got the three finalist names, I can tell you that I researched them at length. I have watched more videos than I care to mention about the Ludlow Select Board to understand how that candidate interacts with his board, as well as the Fairhaven Select Board, to understand how that candidate interacted with their board. I have researched, you know, Google researched their background. I've read local news articles to understand how things are going in their town. You know, I've watched the previous interviews that each candidate has done in other towns that were available on their YouTube channel or their public TV channel. I have re-watched our interview three times, quite frankly, just to make sure and sanity check what my notes had said in what, you know, because when you're doing it live and then when you're watching it, you kind of see it from a different perspective. And again, I listened to the opinions of others who were willing to share them. And I packaged, you know, I've taken all of that into, you know, into mind when I considered the three candidates, three finalists. And I'm going to share with everybody the criteria that I had established for myself in terms of who would be the best candidate. I will be quite honest with you, none of the three candidates are 100% perfect. None of the three candidates lived up to my highest expectation of the perfect town manager. If you can take all three of them and smush them all together into one person, that would be best. Not possible. We have to choose from the three that were presented. And I'll be quite honest with you, all three are highly regarded professionals. They are experienced. They are respected in their field and they are highly qualified. I was happy to see the three names that came out. I think our timing was a little bit off, quite frankly. I know that we had initially five, I believe, five finalists, two had pulled out because they took other positions. And I would have liked to see them, those two as well and be able to consider them. But the criteria that I created and that I was looking at was first, in my mind, again, relying back on 20 years of public service, is that customer service and the open door policy for residents is number one. I look at, you know, even when I'm hiring for my own department, I look at customer service skills. I wanted to hear from each of the candidates, how they interacted with residents, whether they viewed it, residents as a customer service, open door policy, whether they, you know, whether that resident is coming in happy or mad, how they would move mad, listen to them, meet them in their space, address their issues as much as possible and legally possible to try to satisfy the needs of the residents. That is the ultimate thing that anyone who works for the town of Auburn, regardless of whether you are in the lowest employee to the highest paid employee, you need to be providing a high level of service to residents in my mind. And that's the highest level ultimate thing that I was looking forward and see how they interacted with residents. And when I was doing the research, listening to meetings, reading articles to also understand not just what they were saying in the interview to us, but how was it coming across in the communities that they worked for. Second was whether they shared my values when it came to town employees. I am a big supporter of internal succession planning, of providing employees the tools necessary to grow professionally and achieve higher levels should they want to within the town or in another community or in another profession and equipping those employees for success. But I'm also big on holding employees accountable. Sometimes employees do not live up to the expectations and I wanted to make sure that that person, while providing that support, was able to step back and then also hold someone accountable if necessary if they were not living up to the expectations. So I was looking for those types of indicators in their answers. Also, I think I said this, you know, one of the reasons why I wanted to go out to do a full search was that sometimes you get stagnation if you just do internal with no thought to going out. And I wanted to make sure that we had somebody who was open to new ideas, new ways of thinking, introducing new forms of technology, et cetera. One of my follow-up questions, as everyone who watched it will remember, was on economic development. And I wanted to understand their viewpoint on economic development and how they would foster, inspire new growth. Because to me, the best way that we can grow our economy and reduce the residential tax burden is through new growth. And we have a ton of potential. We've done a ton of plans and we've not acted on a lot of them. And I think we need, well, I want to welcome every single business to the town. The fact that we're going to have a car wash across the street from another car wash is a lost opportunity on that parcel. The fact that we now have a bank being built next to another bank, two, three buildings down from another bank in Jury Square is a lost potential for Jury Square in the Jury Square vision that we had. And I wanted to understand what each one of those candidates would bring to the table as it related to that. The next for me was respect for elected and appointed officials. I'll just leave it as you have heard the comments from the library board of trustees, two members here on, you know, their previous interactions with staff who are no longer with the town, the lack of respect that they felt. And I want to make sure that the town manager coming in understood that they were part of, you know, part of the community and had to respect the representatives that were chosen by the community on the various boards and commissions. And the last two had to deal with their own actions with us, with our board. I was looking for somebody who was going to be a team player and a partner with our board, somebody who was going to work proactively with our board and not be adversarial, not take the position that I am the town manager and I have this right to my charter and can move forward. And I want to make sure that they were a team player. And the last thing was, and one of the most important was, you know, I had to believe that I could trust their opinion and their advice. And this is where watching all of the videos of the various meetings from the other towns really, you know, sort of opened my eyes to whether I felt comfortable with whether I could, as a board member, trust the advice being given to me. Because in the end, you know, we're going to get our information, the vast majority of our information from our professional staff, from our department heads and from our town manager. And if I feel as though I can't trust that opinion or advice, then, you know, I have a big issue. So that's sort of the criteria that I laid out. I have the candidate of the three who I think checks the most of these boxes the best and I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Dan Kavanaugh. Dan, did you want to go?
Sure. Thank you, everyone, for meeting. It's been an interesting week and I'm sure my colleagues believe that we needed to give time to consider the candidates and to give the public time to consider what they heard, do some of their own research, and we heard some of that tonight from all over the public comment. I'm very appreciative that so many people reached out and gave us their perspective on each candidate. I was pleased to see that, you know, two candidates kind of came to the top for most people that I heard from. And that speaks well of the candidates and the candidate pool that we had. You know, this is not a decision to rush and, you know, I truly feel that we need to look at this and what the optics are when we start saying we want input and then, you know, the night of, we want to make a decision. I just don't think that's what we want and I'm glad that the board course corrected on that. Most of what Mr. Corrane said as far as things that I look for in a leader, I've served with all three town managers that we've had currently. So I've seen their management styles up close. That is a big part of my decision is how do you lead and how often do you invite people into the process? For too long, we've had a closed process, in my opinion anyways, where volunteers and members of the community were discouraged from sharing their point of view. They weren't coming to the board and I've seen that in the last year or two, that change in the public. And I think the town has become stronger because of it. I think we've had better discussions because of it. And, you know, I look forward to working with the candidate, the successful candidate, and I wish the other two candidates best of luck and best wishes and their continued search for employment.
Thank you. Initially, I was against waiting a week, but, you know, I changed my mind. It was a good idea to do that. It did give opportunity to people, people who employ by the town or people who are residents to provide some comments. And I want everyone to know, I gave weight to all the comments, even the anonymous ones. And I did some follow-through also and did some research. So it is a tough process. It's a big job. We owe this person for a while. So I think I'm definitely ready tonight to make a selection.
Okay, so is there a motion on any of the candidates? Certainly.
I'd like to make a motion that we issue provincial pending negotiation contracts, appointment of Dory Vecchio as the next town manager or a three-year contract.
Are there any other?
Second.
This is going to be a roll call vote. All those in favor, Mr. Corrane.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
I don't think I heard you.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
And the chair is a yes as well.
I would like to volunteer my services, be part of the negotiations as well. I know Mr. Corrane expressed his interest. I don't know of other board members.
I would also, so you have to make a decision on that.
Ooh, I have to make that decision?
So I would also say, I don't necessarily have to be part of that, but as long as part of the process is feedback from all the board members and we don't go into executive session with a final contract.
So, I mean, in my view of it, and just to answer, just to provide some information to Mr. Rafferty, I had inquired ongoing, I know he's not here, but he'll probably listen to this later, I had inquired on having a discussion, as the board knows, about our candidate before making our selection because they are all three professionals and if we were going to discuss the candidates by name, I didn't think it was fair, so I wanted to have an executive session. However, open meeting law requires that once the finalist names are present and presented, everything must be done in public. So there could be no secret votes. There could be no secret discussions. So that's why we've done everything into public. Contract negotiations are very different and those can take place in executive sessions. So, I mean, I think that regardless of who's chosen, I think that part of the meetings in the lead up to the final adoption of the contract should include executive sessions where we meet and we go over how the contract negotiations are going, just as we would with every, as we get updates on the labor union negotiations and get feedback on the positions from the other members of the board, you know, so that it's not a, here's the final one and, you know, accept it.
I agree. Sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, so in that, four of us are public employees and we have one member who isn't a public employee. In the past, it has been practiced, which does not have to dictate the future, and I certainly think that traditions have their time and place. But where Ms. Kavanaugh is the vice chair of the board, I would like to see her serve. And I would like to see Mr. Chambers serve so that we have both a public and a private look at this contract. I think it's important that we have balance of the people who are doing the negotiating and I agree, we can all participate in different ways through executive session. So I certainly feel that Mr. Corrane is obviously a very knowledgeable person and I know I rely on him a lot. But I would like to see us have someone who has a lot of private sector experience in contract negotiations and someone who is in the board leadership, which obviously Ms. Kavanaugh is the vice chair, so I just wanted to put that out there.
I just, I think everybody would do a really good job, so I'm open to whoever is interested. So does this need to be a vote?
It does.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Ann Kavanaugh and Steve Chambers to be the primary negotiators of the contracts for the new town manager.
Yeah, so could I, I just thought, Mr. Kavanaugh.
I just don't want this vote to be problematic because the notice wasn't provided that a vote would take place. So we provided that for the next meeting. It's on the agenda for Tuesday when the board can take a vote.
So we'll do that Tuesday.
That sounds great.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we waive the residency requirement of the town manager under section 3.05 of the town charter.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Corrane.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
The chair is also a yes. And that is the agenda for today, so we would just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, a roll call vote. It has to be a roll call. Mr. Carpenter.
Aye.
Mr. Corrane.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Aye.
And the chair is a yes as well. Dan, thank you so much for joining us.